What do I have to bring with me?
Company history, work culture.
Probably my driver's license.
But they're in case not Bonner Springs.
No, yeah, they're in KCK. But I wanted to focus more on development. I tried to get my lead from my funny Oak project to talk about the Old Mill, his investments, and updates on that project. He's like, hit me up next year and I think I'll be in a better spot to really dive into that. Because, I mean, what they've done with the Old Mill is just incredible. So, so I'm really, I'm gonna snag him for next year. So, it'll be my second choice.
Can you send that to me?
Yeah, YCOvotes.com. They have locations all over the United States.
Can it be on my phone?
So, it was a pretty big deal that they chose.
Yeah, they're a big brand.
Yes. They're like, right.
The what?
So.
They did a call on Ella.
It seems to me that that's a problem I had last time. I couldn't get to them.
And who's in Vancouver?
What is your phone number?
They have the two of them.
Nine one three.
Oh, I've seen pictures of that.
Four four nine sixty-nine sixty-one.
That sounds amazing. So, I'm excited. So, like thirty minutes, we applied music this year. Lots of times just people that hang out and enjoy with each other. Like actually get a chance to mix and mingle and enjoy. So, thank you for coming. Are you bringing your pretty wife?
I'm letting her.
With the ugly one at home.
When does your, when does your term expire?
Him? He has two more years.
Two more years.
Right?
So, how many, we were running for four-year terms?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We're gonna start off tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Reverend Flornoy. If everyone would please stand.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you very much for the blessing that you've given us. We have bowed heads and humble hearts, thanking you for your son, Jesus Christ, and his finished work on the cross. We ask your blessings tonight over the city council meeting tonight, starting with our mayor and the city council members and their assistants, asking you to bless our police department, our fire department, our first responders. Lord, let every decision and every thought, every plan be guided by your spirit on tonight and what will benefit the citizens of Bonner Springs. And after we've completed our task here on tonight, we pray you be in the mechanics of our vehicle and see us home safely, and let us find everything that we left just as we left, and we'll give you the honor and the glory. We ask all this, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, we do have a proclamation this evening for Black History Month. Do we have a couple of representatives that I believe would love to come up here? One on one side, one on the other. How's that? I'll let you introduce yourself.
I'm Aliyah Jarrett.
That's all you're gonna say, Aliyah?
I am the president of the Bonner Springs NAACP forty-twenty-nine. He knows once he gets me started that I don't stop, and so I'm like, thank you.
Thanks, Aliyah. Teresa?
Hi, I'm Teresa Bolton. I am the secretary, the branch secretary, and the membership chairperson of the NAACP. And if any of you are members or wanna-be, come see me, or you can email me, or you can call me, because I know there are some members already here, and some of people are inactive members, but that's okay, too. So, just know that's who I am.
What's your email?
T S Bolton one at gmail dot com. But we also have B S N A A C P at gmail dot com for the branch email as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies. Whereas each February, we observe Black History Month in communities across this country. And whereas the celebration of Black History Month began in nineteen twenty-six with Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a Harvard graduate, disturbed by the fact that history books largely ignored the black American population. And whereas the twenty twenty-five Black History Month theme, African-Americans and Labor, focuses on the profound ways that work of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, intersect with the collective experiences of black people as noted by the Association of the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas twenty twenty-five marks the hundredth anniversary of the creation of Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters and Maids, which was the first black union to receive a charter in the American Federation of Labor. And whereas we recognize and appreciate the invaluable contributions black Americans in Kansas have made on American culture. Therefore, I, Tom Stevens, mayor, city of Bonner Springs, recognize our diverse heritage and honor the many generations of black Americans who have contributed to our community, and do recognize, hereby recognize, the month of February twenty twenty-five as National Black History Month, and urge all residents in Bonner Springs to recognize the importance of black history and join in with fellow citizens to celebrate Black History Month. First up is citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. These would be any items that, uh, the, uh, there's an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent government. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Please step up. And there's a little green button at the bottom of the mic. No, no, I'm sorry. On the mic, the, the, there, the police chief's coming up to help you. There we go. And then name and address, if you could.
Okay. Um, Bob in Twyla Kitchen. We live at one twenty-sixth Glenwood Avenue in Bonner. Lifelong residence. We're still concerned with our neighbor across the street, which we believe is running the business out of his residential neighborhood. I am very excited to see, I believe, Mark's sites, send out letters, asking people, not only in our neighborhood, but eight or ten people, clean up, clean up or come see our judge, meet our judge, which I can honestly say, first time in thirteen years, I can back out of my driveway and there's not a collection across the street. So, I am encouraged. Would like some more information on the nuisance ordinance, because I know in the past, we've always been told, well, there is no nuisance, there is no noise, there isn't anything. And so, I'd, I'd like to see how we're moving forward on that.
Well, I will tell you, we, we, um, we do have a nuisance, uh, ordinance, uh, but we did not prior, prior, well, we had, we still don't have a noise ordinance. And so, they are two completely different things.
Okay.
Uh, yes, it took a little while for the staff. The staff has been working behind the scenes, and I know it seemed like it's been an eternity to try to deal with the issues you've been having.
Yes.
But eternity would be a short, short term. But the staff is working diligently to try to help resolve some of the issues you and your neighbors have been experiencing, so.
Okay. Would it be possible for us to get a copy of what's being put forward?
Yes, it's, it's in tonight's agenda, but that's a draft version.
Okay.
Um, I assume probably at some point in the near future here, in the next month, we will probably, the, I don't know if it'll be in our next February meeting, or if it'll be in the March meetings.
Yes, as long as we don't hear any significant changes from council, and if you do have changes, please send them to Chris or myself. But as long as we don't have any significant changes, we will have that on the February twenty-fourth agenda.
And that's when you would be voting on it?
Yes, that's when we vote on it. And if it passes, then I think it's, we have to notice it in the paper, and it takes, is it thirty days or sixty days?
For, for regular ordinances such as this one, it would just be when it's published in the paper the following Thursday.
Okay, so it's as soon as it's published.
Okay, I'm sorry. What paper?
Uh, and actually, the pub, the paper of record is, we use the Windy County Record.
Okay.
Isn't it the Windy County Record?
Okay.
The Business Journal.
And the Kansas City Business Journal as well?
Just the Kansas City Vis, or I'm sorry, the Windy Echo.
The Windy Echo.
I'm sorry, the Windy Echo. And then where would I get a copy? You said it was?
Uh, staff can probably assist you maybe in giving you.
There'll be a copy in the agenda to be considered by the council. Once it's passed, it'll be published on our city website.
So, next two weeks from tonight, I can look at it?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That agenda usually comes out the Friday before the meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to tell you, I thank you all for your time and your effort, and I know it, it is very time-consuming, but I do appreciate you, and it's nice to see our city taxes at work. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate you being patient. I know it's been frustrating.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that wishes, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. There is a draft in tonight's agenda. If you go to Bonnersprings.org, and it's at the bottom of the website, agendas and minutes, and you can go to tonight's agenda, and there's a draft of the noise ordinance in.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Seeing none, then, we will move on with the consent agenda. Uh, we have four items on there tonight, the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, uh, special city council meeting, minutes of the February fifth, special city council meeting, claims for city operations, and appointments for boards and commissions. Uh, we have the appointment of Excel Gray III for the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee. Is there, the staff wish to have anything polled? Is there anyone from the citizens wish to have any item polled? About council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. Shannon. I will call for the vote.
Motion, vote is to approve the consent agenda as presented. Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens? Oh, sorry. Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Caught me off guard there. I didn't know what to say.
Sorry.
Onto new business. SUP zero four twenty-four, special use permit for two-three-nine-two-zero, West Forty-third Street, contractor garages. Uh, this had a public hearing down at the planning commission, so there will not be any public comment taken this evening. Uh, is there any ex parte communications or other, um, anything else that, declarations that need to be, uh, put on the record? Seeing none, then I would go to staff.
Evening, council members and Mr. Mayor, Mark Lee, Community Development Director. I'm here tonight to look at a special use permit for the construction of some contractor garages. Um, mostly be indoor storage for contractors. Each space can be rented individually. They're able to store a vehicle in it, store their equipment, store their materials and things like that within these buildings. There was discussions early on, and, and, you know, they, they would more or less be able to operate their business out of that facility if they needed to or wanted to, but really, it's gonna be for the storage of, of, as the developer, the, the applicants put it, um, someone that's run out of room in their garage at home. And we need to expand their business, and they can look at one of these smaller spaces instead of having to construct a whole new building or something like that. The applicants are here. If you guys have any questions of them, but we put some stipulations on there to kind of restrict the things that they could do with them, including not living in them, as well as some others.
Is there anything else, staff, that needs to add? With that, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to approve the special use permit for two-three-nine-two-zero, West Forty-third Street.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, and a second by Ms. Blanks. Uh, we'll start down there with you, Mr. Shannon.
Um, looking at everything, uh, it looked, uh, I'd noticed there you had some parameters on things like that, and I thought that was excellent, and I very much appreciate you staying on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing. Nothing.
Nothing from me.
No questions. Thanks, Mark.
No questions. Thank you.
Nothing here. Uh, I do have one or two things, uh, I was just gonna ask real quickly. I did notice that the, um, uh, the owner of the grass pad had some, his concerns, but I assume those all kind of got alleviated or?
That was the first and only time I've heard from them, so.
Okay, but I mean, as far as the, as far as the meeting went, they were able to not show that it was not gonna have a tremendous impact. Secondly, um, what type of trucks will be turned in there? Because what I noticed is that it's, there's no other egress out of it. It's strictly one ingress, egress, in and out. Is there no turnaround for the trucks or?
So, back in the back, there's some open space, but no, not really. It's not meant for any large trucks or anything like that. It would just be for pickup trucks, more or less, maybe someone pulling a trailer.
Or utility kind of vehicles?
Yeah. But not, not any kind of large truck.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
I did appreciate the photographs and the things like that, because you get a, a reel, a reel for it.
If there's nothing else, I would go ahead, then, and ask the clerk to record the vote.
Voting on a motion to adopt an ordinance to approve the special use permit for two-three-nine-two-zero, West Forty-third Street. Blanks?
Yes.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number two, BSZO zero four twenty-four, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, establishing an entertainment and amusement zoning district. Um, same thing as the previous item. We did have a public hearing on that at the planning commission, so there will not be any additional public comment taken this evening. Um, I will go ahead and turn it over to staff for presentation.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mark Lee, Community Development Director. This is the creation of a new zoning district for entertainment and amusement parks. Um, you know, with what we've had going on in the works and what we've seen in the past, it was kind of staff's thoughts that maybe we should simplify a path for such an attraction as what you might be looking at. Looked around at the other municipality that has the same venture going on in Arizona, as well as Branson, as well as Tulsa, and a few other entertainment-specific districts. Came up with, with what we have in front of you this evening. It integrates fairly well into the existing Unified Development Ordinance. The building types that are listed in the dimensional, dimensional standards are, are all the way they're listed throughout the Unified Development Ordinance. The only additions or changes would be the hotels and lodging. There's a, you know, we've allowed them to go up to ten stories potentially in height. Most of those would be, I think, limited to nine, because the equipment would be on the top for tenth. Um, but then, again, it's limited by height as well. And then amusement rides and attractions. We don't really have anything for that, so those were added in. Had some discussion about roller coaster heights and things like that, and, and what those might entail. Um, so we came up with the ride heights of a hundred and twenty feet, or three hundred feet if fifty percent transparent. That's more or less a roller coaster. Um, the hundred and twenty could be something similar to, um... Sorry, I can't think of it now. It's a drop ride at, um, Universal or at, uh, Disney. I can't think of what it is. Tower Hotel.
Tower Terror.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Something similar to that, where you can't, it's not visible through, but it's still limited to that height. Um, the only other, other thing was aerial displays. Uh, talked about drone shows are the latest craze now outside of fireworks. They're, they're leaning more towards those, and so those were implemented in there as well, and they're mandated to height by the FAA. Um, the RV parks and stuff, we, we kind of already set that up in a different zoning district. This actually could allow for, for some more throughout their site, but they still have limitations that they have to adhere to. Um, setbacks are the same. Site and landscape plans would all be the same. Nothing outside of that changes. There was a couple, um, changes to the parking, um, to allow for larger groups of parking. Right now, we currently only allow twelve spaces in a row, and then you have to have parking islands or medians. This would allow for twenty-four spaces before they have to do those islands, basically doubling the parking allowed. Um, of course, there'll still be restricted by the number of parking spaces and, and all of that. That was the only portion that really changed in the parking, and then we had to add a definition. You know, we had a workshop in December at the planning commission, had some members of the public in, had a member of the design team for Epic Resorts in, discussions about things that, that they're doing and things that are occurring around the area, um, and then brought it forward in January for the public hearing.
Uh, with that, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the uni, the Unified Development Ordinance to create a zoning district for entertainment and amusement parks.
Second. So, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, and a second, I believe, it was, you, Mr. Kip, wasn't it? Okay, we'll start down there with you, Mr. Reeves. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, on, on the height of the buildings and so forth, do, um, we have fire equipment that'll reach that high?
So, there was some discussion with the fire, the fire chief. He, he gave me some information, um, and, and provided a, a pretty, really a nice detailed document. I appreciated giving it to me, but a lot of it, a lot of it, he, he stated that with the joint ventures that we have now, the inter-local agreements with KCK and other fire departments, that those teams have more knowledge and more equipment to deal with some of these things, so that they, they would be able to join forces and help. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know of any fire department, actually, that can probably reach that high with their equipment, you know, on a ten-story building, but code would require sprinkler systems and all that kind of stuff to make those types of buildings safe. Uh, he did have some discussions about the potential of a high, um, high-height rescue. I don't know, that's not what he said, but it's basically if your roller coaster gets stranded in the air and someone has to get up there to get them, and how they would go about that. But, but he, um, he did tell me that he wasn't necessarily against the zoning district or the uses that were allowed in it. It would just be a change, and, and actually, I mean, it would, it would ultimately end up being a funding, they would need funding to do certain things and stuff like that to progress.
Yeah, that was my concern there, as well as these places, we, we're gonna have to have, you know, law enforcement and so forth to back all of this up, too, along the way. So, as long as that's being taken care of, uh, sounds like a great idea.
Ms. Long?
I don't, um, have any questions, but as I was looking through the planning agenda or planning meeting minutes, were there no citizens that spoke at all during that meeting?
No, that was, no.
All right. Thank you.
No questions. Thanks for your work on this, Mark.
Break me in?
Thank you for your work.
Mr. Kip?
Great addition. Thanks.
Thanks for your work, Mark.
A couple of questions, real quickly. Um, first of all, I'm just curious, what was it? I noticed that in the, um, document that you were changing the parking, where there was a reduction of these islands. What is the main reason why we do those? Is it for aesthetic purposes? So, they, they serve no other purpose, other than just to?
I mean, it reduces heat, heat island effect and things like that. You plant the trees in them, and that reduces some of the heat radiating from the asphalt. But in a, in a scenario like this, requiring a minimum of fifteen acres, so in a scenario like this, they're liable to have vast expanses of parking lot, and in order to chop them up so much, they can gain some spots here and there by reducing the, or increasing the number they can put in a row. But that's really what it would, what they would do is reduce heat island effect, add for some aesthetics and things like that.
That's it. And I do appreciate how you mentioned in there, one of the reasons driving this is because a massive project, if this moves forward over time, could have changes, and you would hate to have changes constantly, having to go back to the planning commission to be readdressed, which then puts a month, two-month delay in anything that?
That was exactly a lot of it. You're right, sir. We wanted to try and outline something a little, had a little less red tape and still had restrictions to it. Uh, and this was kind of a process, you know, and, and we've known that area has seen a couple potential developments of similar nature. So, I mean, even this would still help those amusement facilities even move forward as well, so.
And I do want, wish to appreciate the question Mr. Reeves asked and the answer that you gave, because as we move forward in working with a developer, you know, incentives is always something they want. Uh, we need to make sure that, you know, my philosophy is, I do not want to do something that causes a burden on the tax, current taxpayers. And if we have to, you know, need additional funding for some equipment to support that project out there, we want to make sure that is coming and is not being negated by incentives.
Yep.
So, thank you very much. Oh, can I also clear the air? This is not so much for you, but for the public at large and those who might be tuning in. Over the last few days, a week, we've had, um, some news stations that have kind of got, I'm, I'm real stickler on facts, and I want to make sure that the, um, the general public and the reporting media fully understands that we have not passed any star bonds yet. Nothing has come in front of this council yet. The only thing that has passed that star bond related is just the definition of a district. As well as, at the end of the January twenty-seventh meeting, we did not pass a resolution establishing the Tiff District, the Westgate Tiff District. That was done about five to six years ago, with another project came through. All we did was pass a motion to have the public hearing at our March tenth meeting, so. To be, yes, to be expanded, so. I just wanted to get that cleared on the public record, so. Is there any other, did you want to comment on that?
No, I read that as well and was like, I don't know.
Any other questions, comments from anyone? Seeing none, then, I would go ahead and ask the clerk to record the vote.
Voting on a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance to create a zoning district for entertainment and amusement parks. Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, onto item number three. KDHE Water Plant Loan Agreement, amendment number two. Staff?
Chris Brakes, City Clerk. Um, a couple of years ago, the city took out a thirty million dollar loan with council's approval from Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the new water treatment plant. Um, after that, the city received a two-point-five million dollar loan that was forgiven to apply those funds to that original KDHE loan. Um, we received a letter last week from KDHE with an amendment to that loan. It does not change the amount, it doesn't change the scope of the project, it just changes the payment schedule, and that was included in your agenda. Um, we're asking you tonight to consider approving that, and then, um, going forward, once that project is completed and all of those funds are applied, then we will come back in front of the council with a, an additional amendment that is likely to be a lower amount.
Is there anyone from the public wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the KDHE Water Plant Loan Agreement, amendment number two.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, and a second by Ms. Gurley. We will go ahead and start here with you, Mr. Kip. Any questions, comments, concerns?
What is the service fee on that payment?
Oh, no. Did I say, I'm sorry, Kip?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to resume the open meeting with no action taken at 8:31.
Second. So, we have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Mr. Mcmahan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. On with reports. City manager's report.
The only thing that I have, besides what's in the written report, is I've had some questions on 138th Street, the project there. They are supposed to start this month with their pre-construction meeting and discussions, and I know that our Public Works, interim Public Works Director and our engineer have a meeting later this week. So, as soon as we get more information on that, I will make sure that it gets into my next report or to you all if something's going to start before that. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and start here with you, Ms. Blanks.
I want to thank the ministerial fellowship for having me at their meeting today. I really enjoyed connecting with all of them. One of my goals this year is to further communication within the community. So they're really excited to start receiving my newsletters and posting information on their communication boards, not only for chamber stuff, but for city business as well. A few upcoming events, this Thursday, the 13th, the chambers hosting a ribbon cutting at AT&amp;T by Walmart at 11:30. The chocolate crawl scheduled for this Thursday, the 13th, because of the weather, is being moved to next Thursday, the 20th, and that is a free event starting at 4:00 PM. Next Wednesday, the 19th, the chambers hosting a happy hour at Range 23 from 4:30 to 6:30. I'm excited to announce that the banquet has officially sold out. So, thank you to everybody for their support. And I think the city total has 18 total attendees, so I want to thank city staff for getting that together. March is Women's History Month, and so Third Space, in connection with Visit KCK, will be hosting a women's networking event on March 7th. And then all of council has flyers in front of them. But Saturday, March 8th, is the Third Annual Penguin Plunge for Happy Hearts Working at Lake of the Forest. And so far, I have commitments from Mayor Stevens and Councilmember Mcmahan. So, anybody else that would like to join?
Yeah.
We talked about it. Don't look shocked.
I'm going to ask you a question in a minute.
Do you ever just get two five-gallon paint buckets in your hand when you go out and...
So if anybody else would like to join us in taking that plunge, Mark and I are looking for other volunteers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Long?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
Is there someplace on social media where people could go to look to see what the street projects are as far as utilities that have been tearing up streets and so forth? Is there some ways?
We don't have anything, but we could probably add that to the development page.
Okay, if so, that way I could refer people to them. What's going on there? Well, I can't remember.
Sure. Right now, the big one is AT&amp;T going around and putting in fiber, but we can add that.
And they're also working hard to make sure we get some new gas lines. Is that it? Mr. Reeves?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Mcmahan?
I have nothing.
Ms. Wood?
Nothing.
Ms. Gurley?
Nothing.
Mr. Kip?
I did not get my mayor's report done in time. I was a bad boy, so I will make sure, all the things that I did the last two weeks, I will include it on the, the February 1. Also, I would mention that what you had talked about, Ms. Vogon, on the 138th phasing, during those meetings, then will they actually then have the plan put out on which sections of 138th are going to be addressed in what order?
Yes, once we, once we get more information on the phasing and when to look out for all of that, then...
Get that posted on, on our city webpage and social media and such.
Yep.
And then, since, I'm always the last to speak, so this time I'm going to go ahead and say it first. I want to thank the Public Works crew for the great job they're going to be doing on our streets in three days. So when everybody else comes in next meeting and is bragging about Public Works, I've already got my thank you in, so. If there's nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I make a mo...
Did you have some?
What? Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. Shannon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.